We're going, okay. All right, welcome everyone. It's August 3rd, 6:30 PM. This is a regular meeting of the Arlington City Council. I'm Mayor Rich Nagel, I'll be presiding. And at this time, I would call the meeting to order and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and those in the audience, if you haven't signed the list on the clipboard, if you please do so, so that you can record your presence. At this time of roll call, Councilmember Sharpie.
Here.
Councilmember Batchard.
Here.
Councilmember Morgan.
Here.
Councilmember Gilman.
Here.
Councilmember Amrane.
Here.
All members are present. Also at the table with me, and with us, I should say, on my left is City Administrator Amy Newsom. And City Attorney Arnison is usually on my right. He is feeling a little under the weather this evening. He said he overdid it at the lake this weekend, so he's got to recover. And he is not going to be here this evening. So with that out of the way, is there any changes to the agenda?
I have two changes to the consent agenda. I would like to call for I, Miriam. I am waiting to receive some paperwork that she has proof of the ability to work in this country. And until I get that, I'd like to hold off on hiring her. I've reached out to South Central Service Co-op and to Mankato State. Hopefully, Mankato State can get me the proper paperwork. She would like to start August 24th. So we still have time to get that paperwork and hire her at the next council meeting. And then I would like to add a drone permit for James Knoxen. There should be a copy of that on the desk in front of you. He wants to do some training tomorrow.
Okay. Anything else, any other changes? Hearing none, motion is in order to approve the agenda as amended.
I make motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Sharpie, second by Councilmember Morgan, to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carried. All right, consent agenda, consisting of the following this evening. Approval of the bills, approval of July 20th, 2020 council workshop minutes. Approval of July 20th council minutes. Approval of July 27th special council minutes. Approval of July 28th, 2020 personnel employee relations meeting minutes. Accept resignation of Joe Kubi as Arlington paramedic. Item G, accept resignation of Steve Noel as Arlington paramedic. Item H, accept resignation of Paula Noel as Arlington paramedic. Then, of course, we scratched item I, so that is no longer in consideration. Item J, approve hiring of Joe Lemke as EMT for Arlington Ambulance. He is already licensed. Item K, approve hiring of Chase Masters as PT, part-time paramedic. Item L, approve permit for one-day, four-day temporary on-sale liquor license for Sibley County Agricultural Association for event on September 12th of 2020. Item M, letter of endorsement for Sibley County Fair Board grant to construct a universal building in the horse rink arena, or area, I'm sorry, area. Item N, accept grant from FEMA in the amount of $149,442.86 for Arlington Fire Department SCBA equipment. A 10% match will be required from the city. And then lastly, approve the drone permit request, or permit submitted by James Knoxen for training for the use of a drone. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, or to approve the items on the consent agenda?
Actually, I have a question.
Yes.
Maybe I missed it in the packet, but I'm not seeing. What is the one to four-day temporary, what's the event?
It is a bull riding event, but not a bull riding event. They're not going to have actual bull riding there. And we have Dennis in the audience who can maybe help us out. They're going to have something up on the big screen and they're going to have a fundraising effort that day.
We're going to have a video of last year's bull riding.
Okay, and are we limiting the size of the crowd, the attendees?
Whatever is the law at that time, they will.
Okay.
That wasn't part of the liquor permit, but.
Any other questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Batchard, second by Councilmember Amrane, to approve the consent agenda as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carried. Anyone wish to address the council this evening?
Anyone in the hall?
Is there anyone in the hall waiting?
Not yet.
No? Okay. If not, we'll move along to announcements. Is there, are there any announcements?
I have no announcements at this time, except, well, I did think of something. The ambulance is doing a breakfast at the end of August, that last Sunday in August.
The 30th.
The 30th. It'll be a drive-through breakfast. You'll drive through under the canopy here, get your breakfast, and drive on again. Eight dollars per person.
All right, thank you. Item seven, communications.
There's a copy of the April 27th Cemetery and Parks Committee meeting minutes.
July?
No, April.
Okay.
They have to be approved by the committee before they come to you.
Ah.
And these only meet quarterly. The Arlington-Sibley County Smith presentation, normally they come in person at this time of the year. You probably remember Jennifer Nelson, I think, usually comes from Smith to give a presentation. I put a link there, they put together county-specific YouTube videos. So take a look at that. We usually give them $500 a year.
And Smith again stands for?
Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation.
Thank you.
We received grants from them. Choose Arlington received a $20,000 grant. I've received several grants from them throughout my career. Usually every other year, I've received grants. We received a grant for the incubator space. We received a grant to help our businesses. They have been very wonderful in working with the City of Arlington. So we usually give them $500, and that actually comes out of the EDA budget. So I put it on the council agenda for now, because they normally do their full presentation to council. And they're not coming this year due to COVID. But we'll put it back on the EDA agenda to approve that $500 contribution. Anybody have any questions about Smith? Please take a look at that YouTube video if you haven't looked at it yet. Since they cannot be here this year. In front of you, there's the actual MMPA 2019 annual report. Have a look at that. And also the July public comment, the public, the summary of our July meeting was also in the packet.
All right, any questions on any of those items? Hearing none, we'll move on to reports. Public Works July Report, supervisor, superintendent, supervisor, Kirby Workman. Forgot what your title was.
Worker guy.
Worker guy.
All right, I think it was just the last time I gave you an update. So we've had only a couple of weeks in between that. But, so, what we've been up to, we got 31 stumps around town chipped. And so that's been keeping Daniel and myself somewhat pretty busy cleaning that up, filling it back with dirt, seeding it. Worked on some CIP budgeting stuff. We had a storm cleanup, couple chipping requests. Did some street sweeping, training in with Daniel yet, getting him familiar with where everything is and what his job entails and the equipment and all that. Had some weed spraying yet to finish up with the tractor in the streets and water treatment plant. I had parks and cemetery meeting last Monday. Been doing some mosquito spraying. Jerpy was in town today fixing some storm pipe damage around town, a couple spots, and then a couple catch basins as well that needed attention. Seal coating, I found out, is tentatively scheduled for August 10th. Those streets include Douglas Street, or West Douglas, I should say, Chestnut Street, West Elgin, Sixth Avenue Northwest, Seventh Avenue Northwest, and a portion of West Adams. Yeah, that's kind of the bulk of it, I guess. Due to this last CIP budgeting meetings, I'm going to start, realize I'm going to start charting now all the expenses on our equipment. Yeah, that's never been done for maintenance department, so I'm going to start doing that.
Start like a spreadsheet for each thing.
Yep. Yep, so looking forward to getting that done.
Roof, did you get the quotes back on the roof?
I think they reached back out to Amy.
Yes.
Last reach, got back Q and A.
It's in the CIP that we just looked at, the information was added in there.
So we had a certain amount of this.
Oh, not for separating, I think what Joe was talking, we're talking about two different things here. I sent that information out on the whole building. He's talking about fixing the roof this year.
Fix the roof, yeah. That's still in the works. I got ahold of Alman, they were supposed to come last week, and they haven't come yet. And then Kufal Construction was going to stop by to look at what needs to be done, just to get it fixed up this year. He was what's been budgeted for that. Yep, so they're working on that too.
Was there any, you said cleaning up after a storm. Was there any major damage, any large branches that you deal with? Now, what's the routine? Just, I know people ask me, well, if I, you know, if I put branches out in a curb, will they come and pick them up? I said, well, after a storm, they probably will.
After a storm, yeah. Yeah, we go around with the chipper, go up and down every street. When we know it's been a pretty good windstorm or something like that. You know, heavy rain. But not always. If it's a boulevard tree and a branch comes down, and it's the city's tree, then we'll pick it up. But if people want things picked up or chipped, then it is a fee.
Right.
If it's from their backyard or something like that.
Okay.
So.
Any other questions for Kirby?
Is there notifications that are sent out for that seal coating to the residents? So they know to not have their cars on the road and whatnot?
How do you normally do that, Kirby?
It's been a couple of years. They put out no parking signs, the company does, the day before that. I think in the past, there has been notification, you know, before I took over, I think they used to do that.
I know the no parking signs they put out.
No parking signs, they definitely put out. I, it sounded like they were going to do all the legwork on that, but maybe we should send something out too.
Do you send them letters to whoever's on the streets, or?
I suppose, I don't.
We obviously always do Facebook and website, but.
I found out last Friday.
Could something go out with the billing, with the water bill in August, about the September dates for?
Yeah.
Have the dates.
And I mean, I just found out, so I haven't been sitting on it.
I thought he said there at the end of August.
End of August?
But that's so tentative, because.
August 10th, I put September, all right.
You know, weather can push that back too.
Well, then it's.
Then it's hard to.
It's so hard to nail it down perfectly, that's why they just show up and put no parking. You could just say tentatively August 10th, I suppose.
Do Facebook?
Yeah, I would think Facebook would.
We always do Facebook.
Facebook, have Kirk get in the paper.
And Kirk, yes, could put it in the paper.
The water, and yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Anywhere you can put it, really. I mean, Facebook, sign up front, wherever.
Use paper.
Let it be known there will be seal coating.
In Kent. Put something in there, August 10th, seal coating.
Well, he had the list of the streets.
And Kirby could share with you the exact streets. Mm-hmm. And share with me, Kirby, the exact streets, so I can put it on.
Okay.
I think the biggest headache for the contractors is to have half a dozen cars parked during, in the site. And people are at work, and how do you get the cars moved?
Right.
Right, anything else for Kirby? Thank you very much, Kirby.
Thank you.
Cemetery Committee 2019 Annual Report, Mr. Van Morleham. Welcome.
Yes, thank you. Well, we had our meeting here a couple of weeks ago. And we discussed a few things. One of the discussions came up that we have to come up with probably a review of what we're charging for services out there at the cemetery. We're getting $6,000, I think it is a year, yeah, from the city, just to keep the thing even. So we're going to have to do something there. It's on the agenda for our next meeting. Budget-wise, for receipts, we're 79 percent, this was June 1st, 79 percent for cemetery revenues and 67 percent grave markings. So we're ahead of schedule as far as income, but it's way short, way short. Expenses, nothing out of the ordinary. We didn't have any capital expenses down for this year. So we should stay within the budget pretty easily. Some of the things we're discussing is a new software program. The program, or the system they're using right now is the original one that started whenever the cemetery started. It was all handwritten in books. They're falling apart, probably not the most accurate thing in the world. And it's an invitation to get some, have some problems. And we have reached out to a couple of companies, and we're going to do some more discussing with them, to computerize it. And when that happens, we will get a, it looks like you'll get a view of the area, and then everything's going to be marked. So when somebody needs to find a grave, we can just go onto that computer. When it comes time to mark a site for a funeral, we can go onto that site. It's pretty, it's pretty expensive. One of the quotes that we got was $8,693, and the other one was $12,459. So that, it's something that we probably should have, because we're leaving ourselves wide open for a problem. We redid the driveway, or the roads out there two years ago, I believe, and it's time to seal coat them. Trouble is, they can't seal coat them, they're too narrow. So, but they can do a coating of some kind of rubberized oil that they can spray on the surface and go around there. And then that way, they can control the nozzles to fit whatever is necessary. It looks like it's going to be in the neighborhood of $4,000. Again, it's on the agenda. Kirby's going to be looking up some of the prices. He had 37, and then another one was, or 39, and one of them was right little over $4,000. But we're going to get a little bit rubber on the road on that one. A discussion was had about the lawn mowers and when to trade them in and how to trade them in and everything else. And we received some figures on it. And after reviewing it, the cemetery board recommends that we go stay with the five-year rotation and, you know, keep some records to see exactly what it's costing five years. Because up till now, there's really kind of quasi. So that's one of the other things that we're looking at. And, so anyway, the one holdover from last year, and we looked at that here at the meeting, is the, where the storm sewer went through. And it's coming along very nicely, the grass is coming along. So it's going to, it's going to be hard to even see where it's at in another year. And we did some work on the gate down by the bowl, that old gate. And we're going to be planting trees right up to the gate so that it's going to eventually screen the bowl out completely. So you can't see the bowl at all from the cemetery. There was an old veterans monument dating back to the 50s, maybe, there. And it was getting pretty tough shape, and it was a cross, and it looked like it was about the original one. And they've taken that down now, and there's still a monument, a little square concrete monument with a bronze plaque on it. We're going to see if we can talk to the veterans and see if they'd be interested in upgrading it a little bit. And other than that, we're floating along, we're staying within the budget. And are there any questions?
You guys had the meeting at onsite this last week.
On occasion of both, they were at the cemetery and then came back here.
They came back too.
Yeah.
How far, or how in line are we as far as rates? Are we well below?
Well below.
Other places?
Well below.
So it's one of those things that we've kind of set the rate and just said?
Well, what happened was is they, years ago, it was a service, you know. So we marked the grave and charged them a few bucks, and that was happening. And, you know, they lose sight of costs for keeping up the thing. And eventually, the just mowing alone eats up all of our income. So, and there's a lot of, well, even like the columbarium, we intentionally started out low, but we are going to have to adjust that. And because to replace it someday, it's going to cost probably three times as much as it did to build it. So, you know, we need to start setting up a reserve for that. Just changing the record-keeping, you know, $12,000, it isn't there. And I'm sure the city can tell me it's not there either. So, you know, we are going to review those costs, and they are going to go up, because they probably haven't been adjusted since Herbie Nichol was in charge of it. And for those of you that don't know who Herbie Nichol was, he died, what, 20 years ago?
Yeah, at least.
Yeah. And he took care of it, and never charged anybody, he just took care of it. And when he passed.
And dug the graves too.
Yeah.
By hand.
Dug the graves, sold the stones.
Yeah.
And installed the stones. And he never charged us for nothing. So the budget was pretty good then. But those days are over. And so, you know, it's a work in progress. If any of you have been following the last five, six years, it's come a long way.
Mm-hmm.
A long way.
Has there been any conversation with the Historical Society in reference to our current records that we have? And whether or not they'd be interested with any sort of cleanup or assistance in what may potentially need to be entered into that computer software?
Part of that $12,000 is they enter.
Okay.
So we don't.
Okay.
And it's all set up. And there's so many bells and whistles. One of them is you get a video view of it on the thing, and then it'll, if you were looking for, you know, H1, it's there. You know, it picks it out for you. So it's a pretty neat outfit, and it's necessary. It is really necessary. They, he was telling us the other night, or she was, I should say, the assistant that was out there, that the pages are so bad, you can't hardly read them, and the books are falling apart. And, you know, and I can see the nightmare. I mean, they're actually, years ago, there's, we know there's some graves out there that never got marked. Somebody just went out and buried their loved one and went home. And there's no stone, there's no nothing. So we have areas that we don't sell, because we're pretty sure there's bodies in there, but.
Well, the council has been in discussion about that software. And I think as much as the cost of the software concerns us, but I think a lot of us feel it's necessary. It's the cost of the staff time to get everything converted.
Oh, yeah.
Into the digital form.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a heck of a commitment.
And it's in the CIP for 2022 right now.
Yeah. And, you know, I'm sure it'll take them a while to, even after we make the step to buy it, to get it up and running, probably going to take a while.
Yep.
But they can get satellite views, and they can, it really, it's just some of the systems they showed us, it's pretty neat. And, you know, the other thing is, it's just the cost of mowing that thing. I'll bet you in the last 20 years, it's quadrupled if not more. And it just keeps getting higher and higher and higher to mow there with the stones there. I did break them the sad news at the meeting, that eventually, when we go to the south side of the road, the last road there, they probably will not have upright markers.
Everything will be ground level?
Be ground level.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't think it was, was received unanimously.
Yeah.
But it just has to be.
Yeah.
Because just the cost of mowers, you know, $20,000 per mower, you whack one of them stones, you've bought yourself a new mower, probably. Not to mention the cost of fixing the stones. So, and one other thing we did last year, and I forgot to ask Kirby about it, but we slab-jacked a couple of the stones that were really leaning, and were dangerously leaning. And from what I understand, it really worked well. And it's something that we're probably going to have to put into the budget yearly to start straightening out some of them stones. Because some kids get in there and play it, it could be bad.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. Any other questions?
Counsel, any questions for Dennis? I guess that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis. Building reports. You've received building reports, Mayor. Oh, no, we're on C, I'm sorry. Oh, there she is. That's why you were standing up. Welcome, Jamie, welcome.
Good evening. So my report's probably going to be very, very short this week, because I'm just still kind of.
She's new.
Learning in my new role. Amy did touch base, and the ambulance association is going to have a fundraiser at the end of this month. It is a drive-through breakfast. They do have a meeting tomorrow evening, just to kind of finalize some details in regards to traffic control and all that fun stuff. So they'll be determining some of the details on that tomorrow night. I have kind of taken a look at the current roster, and I'm just, I'm still trying to review and kind of look over the different ways that we can continue to recruit and retain the current members that we have. And so I've been working kind of with Amy on that, trying to figure out some different ways of seeing if there's anybody else that would be willing to volunteer with our ambulance service. Also, I'm kind of working with Amy too in regards to finishing up the paperwork for our transition with the EMS RB, with our medical director, and getting that all taken care of and ready to go here for next week. And other than that, we just have a mandatory meeting for the Arlington Ambulance next week in regards to training and some formal introductions as far as anybody who hasn't met me yet in my role. And just kind of really absorb what the service has to say. And if there's anything that needs to be changed, addressed, added, taken out, whatnot. I want to keep that transparency.
What night is your meeting, Jamie?
It'll be next Tuesday, August 11th, at 7:00 PM. Other than that, does anyone have any questions for me?
How do you like it so far?
I like it, it's challenging.
Good.
It is, I enjoy it. We have a really, really awesome crew.
I agree.
Okay, any questions for Jamie? Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Sorry for the mix-up earlier.
Skip purpose.
All's well that ends well. Now we get to the building.
Now you can take a look at the building reports. We haven't, hadn't received them in a while, so I reached out and said I'd get a copy of those. Any questions, basically, for Darren Hasslett? These come from Darren Hasslett. Obviously, it's still been a lot of building permits out of the city, which is good to see.
Those are probably two months in a row of pages fuller than I've seen in ever.
Been a long time. We haven't seen one this, yeah, a spreadsheet this large in a while.
Okay, any questions on the building reports? No questions on the building reports? All right, we will move on to ordinances, resolutions, resolution forty-four dash twenty twenty.
I, yeah, I have something to say about this before we move forward on this resolution.
Mm-hmm.
I wanna give you some pros and cons and a little background on this. In two thousand nineteen, we paid nineteen thousand three hundred and seventy-seven dollars for this. This is where we pay in money and then we ask for projects to get that money back. Like the security cameras in here and the security cameras at the PD were paid for with this. They also run it on the local access network, our council meetings. But not everybody has MediaCom, you have to have MediaCom to see it on there.
Mm-hmm.
So we have created a YouTube channel that anybody could go to the library or any public facility and watch our council meetings. We're still transitioning that, but we are working towards that when our recording equipment works properly. We are in this agreement, we're part of a joint powers agreement, this resolution is twofold. It's for MediaCom to have their wires out here and that we're in this joint powers agreement for the Cable Commission. We have until October fifteenth, we could get out of the joint powers agreement. And then I was speaking with Attorney Arnison, that money would come to the city. We could use that money ourself to buy equipment like a television, new recording equipment, without going to the Cable Commission to ask for that money. On the other hand, they have a hundred thousand dollars or so sitting in a pool. If we pull out of the joint powers agreement, we won't get any of that money in the pool any longer.
So, who's?
Who's, do we know who's all in the joint powers agreement? Like, is it other towns or?
Yeah, it's different towns. Matt is on this committee, but he has not been able to get a hold of the person in charge. I have not been able to get a hold of that person either. I'd asked uh, that person to come out and take a look at our equipment many months ago and haven't heard back from him. I also asked him about the projector and haven't heard back from them.
Hmm.
Yeah, I've emailed him, gave him my phone number, he has not gotten back to me. The way this was explained to me by Tom, and I guess a while back, they were, there was talk about getting out of it. I think this was when Galen Wills was um, on the council. He was on the Cable Commission and there was talk of getting out of it. Then Tom went on and started getting money in, but I guess if it's partly for the, to get our council meetings on TV, not many people have MediaCom anymore, I g- you know, everybody's gone, I think a lot of people have gone to streaming and all that other stuff that, and you never know when they're on anyways, their schedule, but who knows, I've maybe seen it once in my whole lifetime of having MediaCom. Um, so whether that's worth it or not anymore, especially with other media outlets.
Kinda curious, who has MediaCom in here? Raise your hand if you have MediaCom Television.
I don't have television, I have MediaCom Internet.
Raise your hand if you have MediaCom Television.
Just a television.
Just the television. Two of you?
I have.
Well, I can stream from it, from the media service, yeah, from MediaCom service.
Right, but can you get the?
No, I do have cable from MediaCom.
You have the television.
Oh, no, we have a ca- I'm sorry, we have cable from MediaCom, yeah, yes.
Okay.
You get.
So three of you have cable.
So that's that access, local access channel?
Yeah, seven, seven and eight.
That's main thing, everybody gets it.
Yep.
If you get.
If you get their television service.
Right.
Right.
And it's usually on during the day, isn't it?
I have no idea, I.
I turned it on just out of curiosity and all's I keep seeing are ads and movies played.
Yeah, I think it's on during the day, so people at work aren't getting it anyways.
Is this, is this annual?
Do you mean the amount we pay?
No, the nineteen thousand three hundred now.
Yes, you pay that about every year.
Per year.
It varies.
It varies, but the last number I have is nineteen thousand three hundred and seventy-seven and it's always gonna be about that amount.
Yeah.
So then other communities in the Cable Commission that have MediaCom, which there must be some.
Mm-hmm, Winthrop.
They als- they also pay in.
Winthrop for sure, I think Gaylord is another one that is part of this joint powers agreement.
I think given, I think pretty much everyone in a county.
Given, you are correct.
Yeah. Henderson does not have MediaCom, I know that.
No, I don't know about me in a life, but.
Could we gather more information on it? Um, you know, how much is in the fund? What can it be used for?
The joint powers fund?
Yeah, who's all in the joint powers?
Hopefully Matt can get a hold of Winthrop Warner. That's the only way we can get this information is to have our representative and Matt's our representative.
Yeah. Yeah.
I am not actually, I'm not on that committee.
Yeah, if I can get a hold of him, do you have a phone, I mean, I don't even have a phone number for him, so, I just got his email address and I've emailed him. And he's not gotten back to me, so, but I will keep trying and see what I can find out.
That's a phone number for him. Cause we'll need to make a decision, I I had a good conversation with Ross about, cause you know, I'm, for the pros and cons if we wanna stay in this.
I would think the fact that we can't get a hold of anybody would be.
That's a red flag for me.
I mean, it a little bit of a red flag, but I mean, it it also would kind of hold out any sort of contract that, you know, for some reason, you know, we didn't approve it if we were to in time, um, we couldn't, we couldn't reach anybody for questions that we had.
Right.
And I would see that as being.
The last meeting they had was June, I believe, right before I got on.
Right around the time you started.
Right around the time I started, Tom was still on, he went to it, I was unable to attend. Um, do s- do some plans that I had, some things that I had going on. Um, and then after I got on in July, I reached out to him and I haven't heard, all month I haven't heard anything, so, and you can't tell me, nobody checks emails, so.
I would suggest if we aren't getting any response from Wayne, maybe from um, Jenny and Winthrop.
She is no longer part of it.
But would maybe she knows another source that we could contact.
To contact.
Do you have Dan Cox's information, email or anything like that? Cause he's the other representative.
I do not personally, but maybe we have it at the end of this somewhere.
Okay. I'll do some more digging and see what I can't figure out on that.
I know one thing that bothered me, it's been bothering me for three or four years, is that between Galen and uh, uh, Tom,
Tom.
they have never been furnished an annual financial report from the Cable Commission, never.
Okay.
So it might be difficult to get a straight answer on.
And I.
We don't have to get money, though.
Well, you know.
We don't, yeah.
That's the reality of it.
It surprised me to know that they didn't have to, by law, furnish a financial report every year, but.
That's true, it's never been on a, it should be presented to the council.
Yeah.
Each council that's part of the joint powers.
Just as a point of information, you know, just to know what.
That's interesting.
Where's the money going?
Yeah, where's it coming from, where's it going?
I mean, I know Tom had expressed and emphasized the relationship.
He wanted this to.
I just didn't know any reasoning or backing behind it, I just know that he was adamant about keeping a part of it. Um, he's no longer here, so now, now it's turning over to, what is it, what what do you do and?
Right.
You know?
Mm-hmm.
He said he's gotten some money for so, he told me he got money for some things, but.
Well.
Yeah, I know they did the security.
Sound system.
And this stuff and.
Mm-hmm.
But now.
But according to what Ross told me, if we don't pay that into the joint powers, it comes directly to the city. The city gets that nineteen thousand dollars a year and we can use it to purchase.
Right.
Whatever we need.
And the only thing I can say, if there is a hundred thousand dollar pot there and we pull out, we're hu- we're, our portion of that would stay.
We'd lose it, mm-hmm.
And ultimately, all's we're gaining by being a part of it is to be put on cable access.
Local access network, those are the two.
Those are the two, and you have to ask for the money and it's, you know, it's a pot, so everybody's asking for money for the most, if they're doing it correctly, I guess.
Kind of like a grant.
But I I don't think that they have been, they have stock out, they haven't been spending the money.
Right.
Right, so, I mean, they say there's a hundred thousand in there, but how much more is there in there? They don't have records, they don't show us records, other like stuff, so.
Yeah, how much does, how much sort of cable company?
How much do they pay MediaCom to put us on there, right?
Yeah.
A hundred thousand a year or eighteen thousand a year was.
I think most of the tables.
Table it.
Forty-four twenty-two, so you do valuable information.
I'll second that.
Motion by council member Batchra, second by council member Sharpie to table item nine, that'd be resolution forty-four dash twenty twenty, uh, dealing with the cable franchise decision.
So I will work with Matt, Matt and I will work to see if we can get some of this information from you or from them.
Okay.
If we don't have it by the next council meeting, we'll just give you a brief update that we haven't, we haven't been able to get any information from them yet, but.
Home favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Proves no, motion carried. All right, moving on to item ten, the future of city committees. This is continuing discussion from the last council meetings.
Lauren, did you have anything more to add?
I just, I wanna reemphasize that the citizen committees are not the focus here. The only citizen committees that would change would be to combine parks, cemeteries and community center into a kind of a parks and rec. Everything, all the other citizen committees would remain the same. The only thing that I am proposing here that would see major change would be the council and some of the miscellaneous. So, um, fire, police, ambulance, all of those, finance, um, personnel.
Personalities.
All of those would go to full council rather than through two council reps then making recommendations to council. Full council would be working on issues related to those areas altogether. So we're all getting the same information, we're all able to enter into informed discussion and make decisions collectively rather than relying on the recommendation of two people and voting that way.
So, um, yeah, I went through line by line and kinda wrote a nest by all the ones that were the same. And then I got back to the back there, a couple, couple of things, I have, just talking points. Um, so I was, I'm, I had a brief stint on the parks committee, I think I went to one meeting and then and then we changed. And then, uh, also the uh, community center. And those, those two groups seem to be, um, I don't know if you call it a larger group, but they're they seem to be really engaged. So, I almost felt, I, basically a little note I had on here was kinda separate, um, the community center from the parks. And then I was wondering if maybe like the cemetery, um, you know, could that one be kinda combined with Shade Tree or, you know, just maybe a different, different approach? And then on the library, I I took that one and kinda threw it in with the community ad and the summer rec advisory board, cause it kinda seemed like it had fit.
I think we have to leave those separate.
Okay.
We need a Shade Tree Committee for Tree City USA.
Yep.
And that one has to be on its own.
Yeah, it has to be.
And the library as well.
And community ad has to be.
Community ad also needs to be separate.
Yeah.
All right.
Some of them we can't combine.
I mean, I get, I get the reasoning behind combining the parks and the community center and and that's all based on, right, the the rental spaces, right? I mean, you you can rent out parks, you can rent out the community center, right?
Mm-hmm.
Cemetery, cemetery's being administered by.
Cemetery's kinda like. Similar like parks.
Our city staff, right?
Correct.
Out of the community center where they're currently housed.
Yeah, if if anyone has sat in on any of those meetings, the dynamics of the makeup currently on those committees is, it's uh, unique, each one is unique. Um, so I don't, I'm not sure, I'll put it, of course, it it depends on who the individuals are that would fill those spots.
How big a committee would this be if it was one committee? How many people would be on this committee?
I don't, you know, that's open for discussion, that's not really my focus here.
Could be big.
You know, that that was something that you could adjust it, so, you know, it's open, yeah, open it up for discussion.
So we could have a lot of people on it.
You you could, although, you know, committees can get too big also.
True, that's what I was also thinking.
Yeah.
The time commitment.
Mm-hmm.
For community members, so, and for the council, I guess we'll be one thing in line. If you combined, uh, you know, taking quarterly meetings and making a monthly, you know, because we have more things going on. You know, that might be hard for these committee members that I used to just do it the quarterlys.
Jean, do you wanna come up and say anything as you've been working with the cemetery, the parks and uh, community center committees?
Um.
Why don't you come up to the microphone?
I guess, sure.
She's actually been working pretty closely with them, so she might have thoughts.
Um, yeah. So, I make the addendums for the parks and cemetery committees, I attend the meetings.
Do you wanna turn your microphone on?
It's not on, okay, sorry. So I make the addendums for the parks and cemetery committees, I attend those meetings, I do the medics, all that. Um, and since I'm the community center coordinator, of course I attend those meetings as well. Um, I think that combining them would be far more effective for a really wide variety of reasons. Um, I think right now, there's just, I think feeling we have a meeting and we don't really get anything done, but there's not really, we're not doing anything. It's almost like, I'm finding things to do that we don't need to do. I think that if we met with a combined group quarterly, I think it would be far more time-effective for everybody involved. I mean, that's.
I hear pros and cons on this, cause I know that she does struggle to come up with some, some agenda items, but there are people on each of those committees that are very passionate about being on those committees, so, I.
There's always the possibility the, like, we have, there's nothing determining the size of that committee though either. Like, like has been mentioned, so if it was a larger committee, I mean, it's not like it would be huge really if we did have more people on it. Versus the smaller committees, I guess.
I served on the park committee for over fifteen years. Um, so I I I know it's the group that's on there. And they love the parks. One thing that we always struggled with is that we weren't given a pot of money. So, we always felt like our hands were tied, we have no money in our budget. We can't do anything, we can cut the grass, we can buy lawn mowers, you know, and we fought, we fought, we fought to get picnic tables to be paid for. And that's why they're like holding on to them, they don't wanna let them go because they fought for ye- years, years, and years and years. So, I think that's, that's a huge issue is that they, they're conservative, right? They don't wanna ask for a lot, they don't wanna, they don't really see any really huge improvements that need to be made. And even if there was a huge improvement, to come and ask for a lot of money for the parks with that group, I think has always been difficult.
I feel like that's another, I'm sorry.
So. No, I'm, I'm good, go ahead.
I feel like that's another dimension of it though, that is kind of a budgetary thing versus like what committees there are. And something to consider as well, we pay the committee members, so if we have fewer committees, fewer meetings, we're saving money ultimately. I mean, if we have, and I know there are people on all those committees.
Let's go hundred bucks a year or whatever for that whole committee to be a lot of.
And I know, and I know there are really dedicated members of each of those committees, but I also know that there are other people who really don't care so much. They're there cause they were asked to be, not really because they want to be. And I think that that's something that in terms of appointing people to the committee, Mayor Nabel can probably, probably knows who is the more passionate people and who's not. And I think that that would be the, the appropriate members to appoint to this larger committee or this combined committee, if that makes sense. The budgetary thing, I I understand where you're coming from and I do see that, um, that as well, on even like as a staff member who kinda facilitates it, I see that as well. And I do think that it, it feels like no matter, we can talk about these things, but we don't, there's no power to do anything. I think that creating a larger committee would potentially, it would have more community members that would back those different decisions as well.
Might be interesting for them to have a conversation like parks and cemetery split for the lawn mowers. And you'd have the whole group together to talk.
Yeah, I mean, rather than having to, some of the same thing twice.
Community center rents out this facility while the parks are in charge of the Lion Center building, renting out the Lion Center.
And that's where, honestly. And that's where, honestly, that's where the budgetary conversation shouldn't need to come into play. If, if the parks, if the parks can gain revenue, if the community center can gain revenue, that's money coming in to offset the need for mowers and the need for maintenance. Is there any passion, is there any desire from these to host events or have events that will generate that revenue? That's what I'm, you know, that's what I'm curious with is, you, you, we have parks in town here that we utilize for skating in the winter and ballgames in the summer, but there's no like, is there a tournament? Is there any type of ball tournament that's held at any point where you're bringing in teams from out of town or anything like that? I, I don't know if, I don't even know if they're able to host such events, but that's kinda my theory on if we have a parks committee, parks and recreation committee, what sort of ideas are they gonna, coming up with to try to boost that revenue that they can generate from lend, lending out those areas?
And that leads me down to think of a conversation I had with Laura about forming ad hoc committees when there's something like you're talking about tournaments. Maybe there's a different passionate group of people that wants to host some kind of tournament. That's all they wanna do. They don't wanna meet and talk about parks for the next four years, but they want to work on getting a tournament to town. Once they accomplish it.
Kind of getting a dog park in town.
There you go.
So, that would fall under the park committee, I would think. I don't know, because that's what they're there for. But going to your point as far as like, you know, having tournaments and this and that, you know, it got me thinking from the town and country days. We used to have that for years. That was our celebration. Kinda fell by the wayside, not well attended, you know, but then, you know, thank God we got Harley Dazzle and, and that's our big thing. So, I don't know.
So, this is, if I'm reading this right, that's what the, the plan on this is, is to take the community center, parks, and cemetery committee and then combine them into that one? And then are you eliminating, then I think if I, if I read you right on this one, the, like the ambulance, there'd be, with no committee, the direct, the manager would report directly to the council.
The full council. To the full council.
Are you do?
So, the ambulance still has their own meetings and, you know,
Right.
all those organizations, all those groups start their own meetings. But we as a full council hear their reports. We discuss issues as a group.
Right, right. Will that include fire department?
Yes.
Coming to the meetings as well?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
But there's still, there should still be the fire leaf committee, a separate.
It has to be separate.
That's a separate, completely separate thing.
That has to be separate. And then there's the ambulance association, which is also separate from the city.
Yeah.
Could we, I mean, I like, I like that idea of having them come and report out. Just wondering on the fire side if we could create a fair compensation for the chief to come here for his time to present it. You know, if we have an hour employee, they're, they're getting paid hourly. He gets a, you know, a small salary annually and it's not, it's, it's not enough to cover, you know, these quarterly updates, you know? So, say he spends an hour here, we give him, you know, a fair hourly wage for that or a stipend or whatever, whatever we would wanna call it.
How often is he presenting his report? Is that just a year, he's paying?
Well, he wants a year.
Yeah, I, I agree with you with compensation. I, I fully agree with you that there should be some compensation for him coming in. We're gonna ask him to come more often.
I really like the idea of taking the council committees, employee relations, finance, public, buildings committee, streets committee and just doing away with.
Work session.
Yeah, work sessions, right. Utilities, police. Yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
Speaking of that, there was a request if, if we could bring the, what, what happened at the water treatment plant just to the utilities commission. And I thought, I'd rather the whole council hear what happened there. Because otherwise it goes to that committee and then council.
Yeah.
Doesn't necessarily hear the full story or hears it two weeks after.
It's sort of a, it's sort of a needless step really in the process.
I would rather the full council get it right away too. As to the combining of the other three, I see pros and cons really, to be honest with you.
Yeah. And if that's not, that's not the focus here. That's just, you know.
We could leave the parks, the cemetery, and the community center as are for now.
Mm-hmm.
And maybe just next year, do away with the council committees.
Mm-hmm.
Try that.
Do it in steps, yeah.
Do it in steps. And then if we decide the following year to combine those three, we'd still combine them the next year and then.
So, what I really like is the communication that we've been getting since you've been on board. I'm gonna say that again because that's made a huge difference. Council meetings, for me, if we're here for a couple hours, that's great. If we're stretching it out to ten, eleven, twelve, one o'clock.
No, no.
Okay, but hear me out though.
Yeah, I'm here, yeah.
If we do away with some of these committees, there's potential for it to drag on later and later because there's more to discuss, right?
But.
Because we're not having, you know, a committee meeting once a month or something like that. That takes an hour and a half, two hours. That's all getting hashed out now here.
But most of those council committees are not meeting every month.
No.
You know, so we're not really tag, it's, it's gonna be bigger issues that full council is going to be dealing with. And we should be spending more time on those. We should be all getting that same information at the same time. I don't think it's necessarily, I understand what you're saying. I understand the concern. But if we are organized, prepared, succinct, and we're really only dealing with the bigger issues other than hearing quarterly reports, I, I don't really see it adding that much time.
But Attorney Arneson spoke to the fact that before all these committees existed, meetings were going until midnight, one o'clock in the morning at times too, so.
Well, let's find out. How many of them? Do we have minutes? Let's see how many actually went till midnight or one o'clock.
I.
You know, I mean, we don't know that they did. I wasn't there.
I don't know, I don't know.
There was a time also where they only met once a month.
That's true.
And that would.
Council?
Yeah.
Council only met once a month. So, that would tend to.
That would tend to make a little longer too, right?
That would make. That's a factor, yeah.
And if you go back twenty, thirty, forty years, things weren't as complicated as they are now or involved as they are now with different agencies that we have to report to or report, hear reports from.
You have a lot of different, yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of things going on now that weren't going on back then, so.
Yeah, and it's not my intention to like not have transparency. I mean, that, that's huge for everybody to know it's going on, right? I agree with that point. If you start with the time back, then that's what we're interested in.
Well, maybe if, so, let's just say we move forward that way as far as come, you know, basically doing away with some of these and, and coming to council. We could always choose to basically table it and do a special one, say like the following Monday or something, if it was like absolutely necessary, which obviously adds time, but not necessarily the same night.
It's a big heated topic.
Well, I noticed there's a number of, in the citizens committees, there's a number of terms end at the end of this year, so maybe when December comes, I'll find out that we have half a dozen people don't wanna be on a committee anymore and that might be a, a chance to revisit this again and see if, see if it looks like, oh, maybe it is a good thing to blend them together, being we're short on numbers. But it's something we'd have to.
Has there been any input from the members of those committees? Has anybody asked them what they think of the idea of combining them?
No, not yet.
I guess it'd be something I'd be curious to hear.
Well, can we make a recommendation, a decision on council committees and leave the citizen committees?
Yes, you can leave that as is for now.
Mm-hmm, yep.
That way they're not upset and you can see how it works combining the council committees.
So, what do we need? A motion or?
Motion.
Just to recommend, yeah.
A motion? All right, I'll make a motion to alter the, or eliminate the council committees and have discussions go to full council beginning in twenty twenty-one.
And those committees would be, I'm trying to find my employee relations, finance, public buildings committee, streets committee, utilities committee, and police committee.
Fire and ambulance as well.
And fire and ambulance also? Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, you're right. Okay, is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Motion by Councilmember Gilman, second by Councilmember Morgan to eliminate the, how, how are we gonna word it? How was it worded? The council?
Council committees.
Council committees.
We're gonna leave the parks, cemetery, community center.
Yep. So, council committees again, employee relations, finance, public buildings committee, streets committee, utilities committee, public, police committee, ambulance committee, and fire department committee. Four, seven, eight committees, so. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, no?
No.
Four votes in favor, one opposed. The motion passes. And that would be in place then beginning January one, twenty twenty-one.
We'll bring the true resolution.
Sure.
Later.
Okay. All right, item number eleven, approved, denied proposal from Bolden Mank for water system study. This is a revision from last meeting's discussion. Good evening, Jake.
Good evening. Thanks for having me back. So, since the last council meeting, I did try to revise the proposal over to Amy, whatever you go for, provide a cost breakdown for the softening, so allow you guys to vote on the details. I'm just here to answer any questions you have on that. So, as part of that, you know, we budgeted roughly two days of engineering, kind of, and a little extra softening options. So, the general overall scope is just roughly ten percent of the last of the overall course. I mean, for the best perspective, we're just interested in. And then again, we just wanna be looking at the big picture. So, we're still recommending you guys look at softening options because it's, it is a possibility for the next twenty years. And it's something we're gonna look at.
Jake, I have a quick question.
Yeah.
Would that information be helpful if the city is applying for variance? Would that information also be helpful in applying for variance?
It would actually be required as part of the variance.
It would be required as part of that variance, correct?
So, as part of the wastewater variance that the city elected to do last year, we said this to you a year ago, we're gonna have submitted a letter in response to the PCA about the variance. So, when that is issued with the variance, you're going to have to do a core investigation of the land and we'll get the cost of softening. So, with the timing of this, the thought was that including it with this, this report made not sense just from a overall planning standpoint.
So, can you explain a little bit about the variance? What are we, what are we looking at? What, that the variance is, what is it? We're saying, we're not at the limit, we're not gonna go that route? Is that?
So, the PCA, Minnesota Pollution Control Agency has already made the determination that you cannot meet consistently your chloride limits that were proposed. So, they give you two options with that. Pursue a variance was essentially kicking a bucket down the road and not having to comply with the limit. You need to kind of plan and you can resource reduction measures that you could do again or, or building softening plan, there are options against part of the variance. And then with the variance every five years, corresponding with your permit renewal at the wastewater plant, you have to re-up the variance. So, a fake decision with that is the cost. So, it's not cost effective. PCA has a little worksheet to fill out. And if they're in agreement that it is not cost effective to pursue water softening at a centralized location, then they allow you to re-up the variance. Usually they'll allow you to do that for a total of fifteen years before you eventually have to comply. So, really, within that time span, your options are to continue to look at source reduction measures through more efficient water softeners. And then also put together information, what's the cost as a community to do centralized softening? You know, that's a big part of the complication to have that over in the process, you communicate correctly. So, it's, the variance is just kicking the can down the road. The schedule of compliance is telling the PCA that yes, we will meet this limit at this date. And it's usually negotiable up to twenty years or so.
So, the, the standard that MPCA is, is, has that been set already? What, what the standard is? So, that's locked in? There's a, there's a statute on that and we have to follow to get to that number?
Yep, so the water, waterfall division puts together these limits based on your sea extreme flow. So, pollution's a big part of that equation, so, you know, high and green, you don't have a lot of flow. So, chloride being discharged from the wastewater plant, there is a lot of chloride being discharged to the overall streets. So, they, they do all the math, they do math balances, they have scientists that look at that stuff. And they have determined that you have two limits. One's limits monthly average and one's monthly peak. So, you have to meet both of those limits. So, they, they've made a determination based on a storeable monitoring that you cannot consistently achieve. So, then they force you to choose between period and your schedule of compliance, allowing you guys to choose what you have. So, that, that process is already done. That was done over a year ago, you know, with the PCA. And the city did submit letters stating that you guys were pursuing a variance.
And the assessment was that we weren't really coming close to those limits? The initial assessment.
The assessment is that you can't consistently meet it. So, like, it's highly variable on, I wish, I believe, maybe they don't explain what they've seen in the past, but largely, chloride is a concentration based limit. So, when you have low flow coming into the system, such as in the winter months, or also when your salt on the road is, you tend to spike the chloride. In the summer months, when you have a lot of flow, you turn the flow to the system, chloride concentration's gone down. So, there's really no good way on the wastewater side to control the on-chloride discharge and having on the wastewater plant. It's kind of just.
How would the, how would the salt go up in the wintertime? 'Cause we're not treating our storm sewer. We're treating our sanitary.
Lower flow, so there's less flow to be created.
Oh, you're saying?
The sanitary system versus in the summertime when all the other conditions are hot.
Lower flow in the creek.
Lot of rain.
High iron.
Yeah.
High iron coming into the system helps to limit that chloride concentration.
Winter months, less iron, higher concentrations, 'cause the salt is still coming from the water.
Yeah.
So, basically we're faced with deciding on.
Well, you can vote for either.
For either.
Either or neither.
Right. Either or neither, yeah.
Either the twenty-five thousand without the water softening evaluation, the twenty-eight thousand for the complete study, or you could completely vote against it. Those are your options for that.
Anyone wish to?
I'd vote for the whole thing. Just do it, get it done.
Get a motion, Laura?
I'm making a motion. I'm making a motion. Pay for the whole thing and just get it done.
I will second that.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Gilman, second by Councilmember Sharpie to approve the proposal from Bolden Mank for water system study in the amount of twenty-eight thousand. That would include the water softener evaluation. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, no?
No.
No.
Three votes in favor, two votes against. The motion carries. Okay, thanks Jake. Item twelve, approved, denied amended agreement for staffing services with city of Arlington and the city of Greenaile.
This is amended because I went to the council. This is amended because I went to the council meeting in Green Isle last week. One of the council members, Diane Brown, voiced some concerns about Tim using their computer over there. That's what I thought when I was there, but I did not wanna make a mountain out of a molehill, this is only a six-month contract, not even, it's only August through the end of December. They had security question, they had security concerns, yes, Tim has been through a background check, and he'd basically be in essence like a City of Green Isle employee when he's over there. They did voice concerns about him having access to their computer system, so they would rather he use his laptop from the City of Arlington. So that is the only change to it, I, I would prefer next year that he be able to access their computer. But for now, um, to keep the relationship with Green Isle and not make, I guess basically not to make a fuss over this. I did not say anything. I would say move forward with it for now, and let Tim use his City of Arlington computer for the next five months. And in January, I would stress to put that back in, that he use Green Isle's computer.
They may, they may very well have more of a comfort factor with, with him by that time.
I think they, I think it is a comfort factor.
Yup.
They don't know Tim.
Mm-hmm.
And they were concerned about him having access to their computer. I said he has been background checked. But. I don't wanna ruin our relationship with Green Isle over it.
But, does it say that it's just, when the contract downs, I see it's.
December thirty-first, twenty twenty.
It's on there?
Yes, it was on there.
Last paragraph before the signatures.
It's on there. Mm-hmm.
There we go.
It's on there.
I don't like watching to accept a agreement for staffing services with Green Isle, like, regards to. Like, is it the, um, I would say we take clerk services out of that though, because he would be doing any of those.
He'll still be doing clerk services, they just want him to take messages for Diane.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So clerk services as well.
He's still doing that, mm-hmm.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Batcher, second by Councilmember Omrain, to approve the amended agreement for staffing services between City of Arlington and City of Green Isle. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carry. Uh, item thirteen, communications with residents, Jane.
This is added to the agenda, was requested to get more information, it was brought up, it started with communications, with moving vehicles, when trees are trimmed, and with the water, when the water was shut off, how do we better communicate with our citizens? And something we hadn't looked at a while ago was a system like Code Red. So we're bringing it to the council now, Jane has some information on two different options.
Okay, so, I looked at two different options, um, one of them is called mobile text alerts, and the other is Code Red. Um, kinda comparing the two, um, mobile text alerts seems a lot more geared toward business. Whereas Code Red is very geared toward the public sector, very much.
Sibley County uses Code Red.
Yeah.
So does Mankato, a, a lot of places do. Um, one of the things that I found to be the biggest, uh, kind of con to mobile text alerts was that, so if you have two thousand subscribers, and you send one message, like one actual message to those two thousand subscribers, that counts as two thousand messages. So if you look at the pricing information here, it's based on a monthly billing, and you get a certain number of messages per month. And this would, I think, create, um, an unstable cost for us, and would make it harder to plan for budgeting. Um, and the overage rate for, for these is, I, it's thirty, it's three cents per message, for each additional message above and beyond your, your limit, so depending on where we decide to go in there, I mean, if we do the professional, right, we're looking at annual billing of about a thousand dollars. Um, the Code Red is, um, not very much more than that. Um, it's a stable annual cost, and it is a lot more geared toward, uh, the public sector. Um, it allows, if, you get unlimited messaging, um, you can also, there's also like a social media aspect, like, that can be shared that way. Um, you can have, uh, different contact groups, so if, you know, we're looking at turning the water off on a certain street, right, we can have the people that have subscribed on that street in that group, rather than having to try and pick it out. Um, they have a bunch of message templates, um, they have like a customizable caller ID, um, they have free training, and they have a custom webpage for community enrollment, which I, is like the second page, um, to this. And, uh, it also has a really wide variety of resources and examples for the public sector, of ways to engage the community, which I thought was kinda cool, like their website has a lot. Um, I thought that was pretty cool, so I like that one, um, just because it's a stable annual cost, as well as being specifically geared toward the public sector, toward use by government. Um, and it allows also for automatic weather alerts, which is always a thing, I know I really like getting them on my phone. I still get them from Mank, I live in St. Peter, so I, I can still get them from Mankato. Um, but it's still very, I find it very helpful, um, because I don't really watch the news, so, I, and a lot of people have, most people have a cell phone. Um, so, the difference here with the two, the two options, um, the managed database and without a managed database, the managed database, um, Code Red will upkeep and add numbers in if they have, like, as they get different numbers and stuff like that. Um, and then they will send us updates, uh, regularly, they'll update our, uh, database. Um, and then the automatic weather alerts is.
An additional two seventy-five?
Per year, yeah.
So do you send the phone numbers to Code Red, and they, is that the difference between the two databases?
Um, the two databases, it was, it's, I feel like it's hard to explain that, cause, okay, so I did a software demo with Code Red, um, and she explained it to me, um, the managed database, they, like, when people, um, enroll, things like that, they will manage that and update that, and then they have other sources to get numbers and stuff like that. Um, and they will add them if people have opted into other similar, like, other services like that.
So they'll just add people, they don't necessarily with the managed.
That, that was my understanding, yeah, um.
But with, without their knowledge or permission, they'll just have them?
No, 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 no.
That seems weird.
That doesn't seem, you're not allowed that.
They, I think, I, I don't, it was a long time ago now. Um, the way she explained it was, they, they will keep numbers like up to date and like, stuff like that, they'll update everything, um. And basically, yes, like people, when they enroll and stuff like that, they manage the database rather than me having to do data input.
So, do they use like the spreadsheet to say, Elgin, we're gonna do work on Elgin? So you can just grab the people who have an address of Elgin?
Yeah.
And target them that way?
Yep, yield coding, yep.
So, so, right, that's what they're doing? So when you're talking about managed or being able to work the spreadsheets and stuff like that, you'd be able to precisely grab, where you need to go after certain things.
Right, their, um, their software is really intuitive, um, you can even, like, you can go on a map and like draw, and like target the people that have their addresses there. Um, specifically.
Shuffle like water shut off.
Yeah.
Would that also work for like planning and zoning meetings, when we have to notify, you know, residents in the three hundred square, three hundred.
No, legally you still have to mail something out to them.
Right, but I mean, we could identify them there easily, uh, too, or we could notify them, too, right?
You could, in addition.
I don't know, I like this idea, I, I, I was sitting here thinking, well, don't we have a cell phone that has unlimited texting on it for the city? And can't you just, you know, type, have a group and just send?
That's, I was thinking, a group text.
But it's all or nothing, right, so what, what I do like about this is that you can pinpoint the people who are gonna be affected.
Right.
Snow emergencies, that sort of thing can be blasted, I mean, right?
Yeah.
That, that doesn't matter, but what, but.
People can choose to be on it or not, so.
Right, that's a good choice.
Mm-hmm.
They don't wanna be on it, they don't care, so if you did the one pass thing, they're, you know, people are gonna get some information that's not purposeful, but it really doesn't cost us anything.
Yeah, exactly.
Exactly.
So we can give those, those like snow emergency alerts, okay, if you think about it, okay, so there's just over two thousand people in town, right? So if we set up a snow emergency alert three times in December.
We're over, we're way over.
If we're using this service, we have no way to predict that cost, none at all.
Yeah, I, I don't like, I don't like that one either.
And I don't, I don't think that's, yeah, I don't think it's effective for us, um, especially if, just for the, the size, the cost, the unst, the unstable cost, I think, is, is really prohibitive, and that's why it seemed like a lot more geared toward business to me, so.
I, I do like the other one, if I were to have to choose between the two, I would go with the Code Red, however, I mean, we have a cell phone, but, I mean, we're already paying for unlimited texting, I'm sure, that's how all the plans are.
So.
I mean, if I got a text that said, water's getting shut off on Elgin today, and I don't live there.
Yeah, I think there'd be some sort of, uh.
But does it cost other people when they're getting a mess, see, I have unlimited, so I don't know, does it cost resident, other people? We don't have unlimited texting?
I, I don't think there are.
Well, I'm just asking if there is or not, are there?
When it would be their choice to sign up, if they were gonna get the time.
Right, and.
They either give you their phone number, or they don't.
Or they don't.
There's also.
If they don't want them.
So that would be like free for the same kind of thing, you just wouldn't be targeting.
I almost think there'd be some, some sort of a web-based, you know, I don't know if it'd be an app or what, but something that we could maybe just kinda create our own, last, again, the residents would choose to be on it, and if they wanted to be on it, they could, if they didn't, so be it. And, you know, that one group, you just type in the message and send it, and it would go to everyone that's on it, and, you know, they can choose to read it or not read it, or,
Yup.
you know, whether it applies to them or not. Yeah, fourteen hundred dollars is quite a bit, even a thousand.
That's what I was just gonna be, this is an annual cost.
You know, I'm thinking, you know, you know, three hundred bucks a year or something, and it would be a.
That's exactly the service that this company provides, though, like, cause I mean, there, I looked to see what else there was, and there was nothing else. Nothing.
That's kind of it, right?
And the, yeah.
They've curbed the market on this particular type of service, I mean, we see Scott County's, uh, webpage to sign up for it here in front of us.
And the. Right.
They would obviously tailor something that read City of Arlington, you would go there, sign in with Google, Facebook, or Twitter, create your own, and then add your phone number. I'm assuming also jump in there, itemize which, which types of alerts that you wanna get versus getting all of the above.
And if we were to go with something lower tech, um, but cheaper, who's responsible for that? And if something happens that, I mean, like, with the water shut off, the city didn't even know that was going on.
Correct.
So if something's happening, you know, who gets the information, who's responsible for sending out the message, you know, what, what does that look like?
But, in this case, is Code Red responsible for knowing if the water's being shut off? I still think that it's us going in there, we're still gonna be the administrators, or Jane, or Amy is gonna still be the administrator of the Code Red system on the backside to push out these notifications, so.
I think the, the lack of, um, knowledge on the water shut off was a lack of communication between the people service and us. And that's, I don't think necessarily shouldn't factor into a decision on this. But the, the thing is too, Code Red has an app, a mobile app, they, you can get, uh, people can elect to get emails, automated phone calls, there's a really wide variety of applications, and it's also a trusted name. People are gonna see that it's a Code Red alert and know that it's not fake. That's something that I think is really important, because you get so many scams, there's always scams running. People will send out messages to a bunch of random phone numbers, they'll, you know, send them out just en masse. Ultimately, they can use a computer to generate a bunch of different phone numbers, and they'll send it out, whether that's a real number or not, or an active number or not, and then people will get them, sometimes they respond to them, and it's, victimizes people, and, but this is a trusted name, people know this company, know this name, and they specialize in public sector.
To keep us moving, anybody wanna make a motion tonight, or would you like to think about it for a few weeks?
If we, if we were to do this, where would the money come from now, or would it have to be budgeted?
It obviously was not budgeted for this year, but there was some money put in the, it'd be in the administration budget, and there was money put away for me to go to those masters planning and zoning classes. It obviously is not gonna be tapped into this year.
So we could use that this year.
There's money in the admin budget, but then, remember, it's yearly, it's gonna be a yearly commitment.
My, my comment on it is, what I would like to see is, uh, create an online form on our website, City of Arlington, everybody trusts the City of Arlington if they live here. And it might not cost us fourteen hundred dollars for you to create a spreadsheet, and then enter that group into, um, the phone text group. Uh, and then, if we can share that group with Amy, and maybe Kirby, um.
Please.
You're talking, you're talking about.
And maybe the chief of police, or, or the, so that if something has to be pushed out, and Jane's not here, one of our head officials could potentially push it out.
Code Red allows for unlimited administrators.
I know, but I, I, I don't want to use Code Red, I want to, I want you to create the group, and I want, uh, on our website to have like a form to fill out with their phone number, name, phone number. I think, I think, for me.
How do you want me to send it, though, like how?
You can't send a, a.
Could be an email, I think we're missing the mark on the, the Facebook page.
Yeah.
Text the email to them.
You can't text that many numbers.
Yeah, you can't, like, we're talking about the volume of people.
The volume, on a group text is, is, you gotta do it, you'd have to, you'd have to do it a lot.
A lot of texts.
Plus, when you send a group text, you're gonna, everybody's gonna get your phone number.
Yeah.
And then you're, then, then if they respond to it.
But there's.
No, if you, if, if you're talking a group text by a personal, let's say the city's cellphone, okay, so now the city's cellphone number is gonna send out a group text to a massive amount of people. They're gonna reply, that cellphone's gonna go off like crazy, plus, your cellphone's gonna go off like by crazy, if somebody replies to all, and it, yeah, you can't, it's gotta be through this kind of system if we wanna go this route.
So what if, since we've got money in administration, what if we did it, we tried it now, see how it works, we don't have to re-up next year if we don't like.
Get out of it if we don't like it.
We can get out of it, it doesn't sound like there's a long-term contract, we could do year by year.
Do you have contract information with Code Red?
Um, Code Red sent me, um, full proposals for the different options, um, that's something that I liked that mobile text alerts didn't have. Um, but, they, I did not read it in depth, um, I can, um, and I can get you guys copies of it, like, right now, if you want.
Show me, I wanna see that full copy.
So you're not, you're not ready to, like, exact.
I think maybe this should be.
So maybe I, maybe I'll make a motion table and bring it back, give us the information.
Contract information, yeah, we should.
Contract information.
And in the meantime, to your point, can we try to find if there's any community, like, need for, like, if, can we, can we put something up there that says, get, enter your name here, just your name, just put your name here, Arlington resident, if you want something like this, right?
Could be email, too, right, so I mean.
Cause if we can gauge that two thousand out of the twenty-five hundred people that live in town want this, then I think fourteen hundred dollars a year is nothing. But if seventeen people sign up for it, it's a waste.
I agree.
It's a waste, yeah, I think we need to get a public opinion on this one, and see what.
Nine hundred? Just guessing up, but I'm pretty sure it's about nine hundred.
What's that?
She asked how many how, homes, how many households.
How many households, I need to.
Most residents, well, I shouldn't say most, but, I'm thinking a, a high percentage would maybe even just have a Gmail account, that could be B, C, C, or whatever, so it's a, a one-way thing. They could get that email instantaneous for free. I think, you know, the Facebook is something that we, if we promoted that, and, and residents knew that, you know, I do see some stuff coming out on there, but if they knew that they could rely on it, they'd be looking at that more readily, like instantaneous as well, potentially. Um, and those are things that don't cost any money.
If we get out kind of a survey, asking people if you want to receive this information, how would you prefer?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
You know, whether it's text or email or.
I, I would like a combination of find, yeah, some type of survey to get the community to tell us what they would like to see, right? Because.
We could do a Survey Monkey and.
Yeah.
Yup, there you go.
I'll sort something out, yeah. Um, I, when I got this file, I know it had been kinda looked at before, there were actually names and phone numbers of people that aren't in there that wanted to sign up for it, and not. I'm not, I don't remember how many, but there was people already that were interested back when it was previously.
Yeah, that was last under, Pat Melvin was one that brought it to our attention last year, so, my phone number is probably one of them that's in there.
And again, I mean, the examples of places using Code Red are all much larger than Arlington, Mankato, St. Peter, Scott County, I mean, they're, they're huge, right?
Now, the, the county's Code Red, that informs residents of the county of what, missing child, abducted ju, emergencies?
Emergency type things.
Weather.
So we all have that or have it available already, don't we?
I never knew that.
Yeah.
Uh, my phone goes, my phone went off with the tornado.
Yeah.
And I've had Amber Alerts on it before too, yeah.
Yeah.
Those are unreliable, oh, it's just, I mean, it's my experience.
Again, it.
Right, it does, and I mean, I have those well turned on on my phone, but I don't get them.
Michelle, did she make a motion?
Yeah, I think so, you should, is there a second to Michelle's motion?
Some Survey Monkey and.
Contract information, just see if we can get out.
Did somebody say they seconded it?
Second, I'll second the motion to table.
Motion by council member Batch, second by council member Omrain to table, uh, item thirteen, communicate, the, um, Code Red issue. Any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no? Motion carried.
Thanks Jane.
Thanks Jane.
Thanks Jane.
Okay, moving to new business, item fourteen, approved deny moving Jamie Whiteley from Assistant Ambulance Manager to Ambulance Manager at a salary of fifty-eight thousand two hundred and forty, effective August tenth.
I have mentioned in the past when we hired Jamie as the Assistant, uh, Ambulance Manager, that I believe she was quite capable of being the Ambulance Manager, foreseeing if Ridge View left us and their contract is up August ninth. I am making a recommendation that you move Jamie into the Ambulance Manager position at a starting salary of fifty-eight thousand two hundred and forty dollars, effective August tenth. So her step one is twenty-eight dollars an hour, her step six is thirty-four dollars and six cents an hour is her wage range.
Starting at step one?
Starting her at step one.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, moving Jamie hopefully from Assistant Ambulance Manager to Ambulance Manager, salary of fifty-eight thousand four hundred, effective August tenth.
I'll second that.
Motion by council member Batch, second by council member Sharpie to approve moving Jamie Whiteley from Assistant Ambulance Manager to Ambulance Manager at a salary of fifty-eight thousand two hundred and forty dollars, that becoming effective August tenth. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Pose no? Motion carried.
Congratulations Jamie.
Congratulations.
Welcome Jamie. Okay, item fifteen was tabled, or was, uh, tabled or will be moved to a future meeting, that being, yes, go ahead, please.
Can I explain real quick? We'll have to table this because this is the contract with Dr. Wilcox, we did not receive, uh, one of the attachments for this, we were supposed to receive information on how he would bill us. He's already, he's going to be our medical director because we have to have someone in place when the contract with Ridge View ends and all the information has been sent to EMS RB. We were just missing part of that contract. And I had been emailing back and forth with his assistant today and I had put in front of you. Exhibit A. This is exhibit A. This is exhibit A goes with the contract for Dr. Wilcox, but I did not get exhibit B. So it's not complete without exhibit B.
It's already taken off right that way?
No, it was not taken off, it was not.
It needs, formally it needs to be tabled.
We need to formally table that to get that piece, missing piece.
I'll make a motion to table, uh, medical service contract with Dr. Wilcox, including all information, what, on every page.
Exhibit B.
Second.
Motion by council member Batch, second by council member Morgan to table the, uh, Medical Services Contract with Dr. Michael Wilcox, uh, until the contract includes exhibit B. And that will be brought to the council for action at that time.
Hopefully.
Further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
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 Pose no? Motion carried. Item sixteen, People's Service Report on Incidented Waste Treat, or Water Treatment Plant.
That happened last week, I asked Lee if he would put something together explaining what happened when all the water was pushing out and we did have to file, we did have to file a claim with our insurance company over this, it's about twenty-one thousand dollars.
Ooh.
Insurance claim to fix that computer and get all the programs that run our water treatment.
Uh, so that was a, a backflow preventer, do we know if, have they had that serviced at all, typically you'll have them examined, rebuilt.
It's not, it's not in here, but he had by regular.
Yeah, March or something like that, or May, yeah.
And it passed inspection, so I.
Past inspection.
So essentially they're, they're like a, basically like a back check and there's, calcium and stuff can get built up in there, typically you'll rebuild, you know, like they'll take them apart or change the, change the seals on them and, and actually.
So is there any way that, that foster mechanical is in any way, can be homecoming for any of that, at least for deductible, something like that?
At least for deductible, yeah.
Being that, they just said that it passed inspection, but no issues at all.
It sounds like a Ross commercial, a Ross question, whether or not they could be legally liable for our.
Yeah.
So.
Mm-hmm. Think we should pursue that.
Can we ask Ross that and have him report that case?